Welcome back, everyone. We've got seven. Waiting for Dan. Matt, should we just get started since we?
Yes, I would think since we're already 10, 11 minutes late.
Yeah, okay. We're gonna start. Welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The board is an elected unpaid group of 10 citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the published agenda or other matters of interest to them. The board reserves the right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We desire that our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the board and the community, so thank you for attending.
As required on the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 1046 at sequencia, adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk Princeton Packet and the Times on January 6, 2021. It was distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board Policy 2230 Recording Devices requires that we inform those attending this virtual Zoom meeting that the proceedings are being recorded. This meeting is not being livestreamed. Public members who wish to make comment at the appropriate time, as noted in the agenda or added by the presiding officer, shall raise their hand virtually at the bottom of the Zoom screen. Once called upon, the member of the public will be requested to unmute themselves by clicking the mute button at the bottom of the Zoom screen. The representative of the sending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools as more specifically designated in NJSA 1830, 18A 388.1. Any event this statute is amended, the law shall take precedence over this bylaw. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions referred to high school, central administrative, and district-wide staff only votes otherwise are considered abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. Rowland. Would you call the role, please?
Beth Baron.
Here.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Here.
Dan Dart.
Here.
Betsy Baglio.
Here.
Brian McDonald.
Present.
Michelle Tuck Ponder. Peter Katz.
Here.
Daphne Kendall.
Here.
Susan Cantor.
Here.
Jean Durbin.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The first matter of business is the adoption of minutes for the October 26, 2021 meeting. Could I have a motion, please? Jean Durbin, second, Brian McDonald. Any discussion? If not, could we have a call for the approval?
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Dan Dart.
Yes.
Betsy Baglio.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Your Katz.
Yes.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Jean Durbin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I have a very brief, brief comments this evening. Thank you, everyone, for coming to this meeting where we're going to focus on the referendum that's anticipated for January. I will just say we do not have a chat function anymore on this meeting because we had at the last meeting some very inappropriate and racist comments that came in and it was disruptive to the meeting. So we are, have disabled that chat function, but we do encourage you if you would like to write to us. We, we have our email in the agenda near the public comment portion of the meeting. You can write to us at any time and we all see the emails and we're happy to receive correspondence from you. I also just want to draw attention. We are having a bagels with the board or pizza with the board this Wednesday, November 10th at Princeton High School at 3:21 after school and we hope to see some students there. And we also have another bagels with the board at our Riverside School, Elementary School on the 12th. I believe that's this Friday at 8:00 AM. So we hope to see people there and we always enjoy having the opportunity to meet people in the community and hear what you have to say. With that, I will turn it over to the superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. Similar, my report is very brief this evening because I know the board would like to spend the majority of time discussing the potential upcoming referendum. So we did begin for student surveillance testing at our schools. Many thanks to our front office staff and our building principals, Mickey Christopher for helping to coordinate that. I'm sure everyone has heard the great news that vaccinations have begun for students between the ages of five and 11. I have seen, actually, a few hours ago, I have received my booster shot. So I saw some kiddos in the location where I was, so that's very exciting. And earlier today, we had a meeting with PTOC leadership and they were discussing the possibility of trying to organize a discussion or conversation for families who might want to hear more information about the vaccination process for our younger students. But it is really exciting that we are starting to see that our students can now be vaccinated. Let's see what else. Okay, so I think that's, oh, I want to mention that the district will be hosting vaccination clinics for students on November 30th in collaboration with Princeton Health Department and that will take place at the high school. And the second dose will be on December 21st. And Princeton University is also offering to vaccinate students. You should be able to receive information regarding those dates and the district news. And we sent out our second district newsletter. Many thanks to our communication person, Elizabeth Collier for that. And finally, our students have been uploading their vaccination cards. We have certified almost 700 students to date. I think those are all of the brief announcements that I wanted to make this evening for my report, so I will turn the floor back over to the board president.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kelly. I believe it's, now we'll turn it right over to Mr. Rowland to give us his report on the referendum.
Thank you. Before I share my screen, I just wanted to welcome back Tony Catana from Spiezel with his very architecturally appropriate Greek background. Welcome back. Thank you, Tony. He's just here to help as any questions come up. I'm gonna share my screen now and go over the presentation about our proposed January 25th referendum. Let's give my screen a second to catch up. So we've discussed the various names. We are currently on the facility stewardship referendum. Princeton Public Schools' capital infrastructure, such as roofs, siding and masonry, have been neglected for a long time. This situation unnecessarily stresses the operating budget, preventing the district from creating a modern 21st, 21st century learning environment. The solution, replace and repair leaking outdated and malfunctioning equipment with state funding, 34% of the principal and interest to help keep PPS students, staff and staff healthy and safe. What will include? This proposed referendum would address crucial necessary capital items which affect the health and safety of our students and staff. New roofing in all schools, making them solar ready, deteriorating masonry at the high school, outdated rooftop HVAC at all schools, gutters and fascia at Johnson Park, siding at Littlebrook and Riverside, skylights at Johnson Park. Here's a picture of the tower. So this is on the list to be worked on. The situation is being addressed through use of a consulting forensic structural engineer who is working on the specs. Rooftops and roofs and rooftop HVAC, just some various pictures from across the district. Property owners know if the roof fails, eventually the foundation will. It's of the utmost importance. Also, better indoor air quality, always a number one priority for any school building. The timeliness of our Airdale construction project proved to be very prescient and timely, you know, ahead and during the pandemic that hit us unexpectedly. So this outlines the, the various costs that we'll be proposing next week at the 16th for the board to put forth. As you can see, the vast majority goes going towards replacing leaking roofs throughout the district that have reached or exceeded their end of life. The roof replacements will be white EPDM or rubber roof suitable for solar installations with proper racking systems installed along with solar panels. The racking systems would not void the warranty, warranties on the roofs. We have obtained an analysis of approximately $28 per square foot pricing per Spiezel. We have vetted these with outside additional resources and have looked at recent bids that have been received, noting that it's conservative estimate even in the light of current inflationary pressures in the construction sector, as well as taking a conservative approach due to our recent HVAC experience with the 2018 referendum. And as it proved, we were probably a little lucky as other districts that were doing bids for this past summer. Some of the bids came in as much as double the expected budgets. So it's an issue state and nationwide. We'll also be looking at approximately 39 HVAC units included for replacement in the above estimates. We've also added inflationary contingency for the multiple years of bidding to complete these projects. So we've kind of been looking at this timeline from meeting to meeting, keeping you up to date. Last meeting on the 26th, we approved our architect Spiezel to begin putting together roof specs at three schools in order to have them ready for summer work in 2022. They will be ready to bid by February 1st. So tonight is where we're going over the presentation again. Next week will be where the, we're at, would be asking the Board of Ed to approve the preliminary eligible cost letters and the board resolution to authorize the special election and the specifics and dollar amounts of the bond proposal. Then after that, it would speed up where we have to notify the County Board of Elections, request the special election. And then on the 25th of January, we would hold a special election on a Tuesday, of course. So the proposed estimated plan to work, like I referred to a little earlier, Littlebrook and Community Park, as well as two smaller but failing roofs at the high school, the old gym and classroom 152, which is the trapezoid shaped classroom roofs would be hopefully replaced this coming summer of 2022. If the referendum was passed, we would then work on putting together masonry and a little bit of work on the slate roof at the high school. Siding, gutters and fascia would also be put together. And those projects could run during the school year, whereas the roofs need to be done during the summer. The following summer will be looking at doing more of the HVAC rooftop work. There's a few reasons currently the HVAC sector is going under, like I said, a lot of inflationary pressure, supply constraints, et cetera. And by the time this referendum was passed, even if we were working on the bid specs concurrently as we were planning for the referendum, January 25th, we still would be unlikely to get the equipment in time to be installed in the summer of 2022. The high school and larger roofs and Johnson Park would be looked for the summer of 2023. Johnson Park skylights. And then we'd be looking at the rest of the roofs a little further out, summer of 2024 or possibly 2025. So once we get a large enough section of new roofs, then hopefully in two summers, we could look to enter into a solar power purchase agreement through the RFP process. We consider it best practice for a school district to do periodic facility stewardship type referendum work, you know, maybe every five to seven years in order to take advantage of state funding, as well as to keep our infrastructure in excellent tip-top shape. Long-term planning, so we're still continuing to work on our long-term planning in the district. The district and internal committees are reviewing the work that was completed and we are doing more internal work to continuously assess what we think needs to be done moving forward. The facility stewardship referendum is part of our larger review of our facilities needs where we would map out or in the process of mapping out all of our major infrastructure and a estimated timeframe of replacement. As the district determines additional facilities needs and requirements, there would be additional proposals to address growing enrollment at the high school and possibly the middle school. The goal is to address these needs without raising the debt service or capital tax levy from fiscal year 21, 22 levels, which is on the next page. So this is where I lose people with the numbers, but this is basically an analysis. This slide shows the effect of existing and new debt, net of debt service aid, which, as I said before, is the 34% of our principal and interest. It also shows potential possible general fund tax levy scenarios. One of the things that we've looked to do to smooth out some of the decreases that are coming up due to debt falling off is to front load the debt on this proposed referendum. This actually would save us 400, almost $500,000, $470,000 in principal and interest in this particular scenario as mapped out. And as you can see, so it would help to, to level off the, so we wouldn't have a huge drop off in taxes in one year and then whipsaw back and forth. So it's a financially prudent scenario. It's one scenario. It's not the final scenario. Obviously, we could do a little more work to tweak these. This estimates 2% interest rate on the bonds. We are at still very low levels. They've ticked up slightly. Currently, we are at about 1 and 3/4% for our trip related AAA rated, I should say, municipal debt rating. So it gives us a little bit of a cushion right now of about 25 basis points. We never know where, once we go to market, where exactly the rates are gonna be. But we're being, we're also assuming here conservatively that in the upcoming budget cycle that we're gonna use most of our banked cap, which we're of course not sure yet. We'll be doing our detail work on the budget over the next three to four months. We may not need that, but we're being a little conservative here in the financial estimates. So the next slide I wanted to go over is the tax levy impact on the debt service only. So once again, this is the same assumption of 2% interest rate and the same front line of principle that in 2023, the average home assessed at just under $839,000 would have a drop off on the debt service levy from 790.59 down to 447, stay about flat the next year and then drop off to the 235.62 for the average home at about $839,000. What is the cost of doing nothing? The cost of our repairs would be significantly higher without the reimbursement of 34% of the principal and interest payments from the state of New Jersey. Additionally, there is an ongoing risk of mold and structural damage as leaks continue at the schools. And finally, and almost as importantly, Princeton Public Schools cannot move forward with solar installation. Very important that we do all these things. What do solar ready roofs, we look around at other districts around us. We've talked about this before. Hopewell Valley, many, many of our districts around us have saved money and helped the environment. We feel is important that school districts and governments in general help to curb emissions of greenhouse gases in a fiscally responsible manner, helping to lead society as a whole. So voting yes on January 25th, 2022 would save taxpayers money in emergency repairs, custodial overtime and prevent the loss of classroom space due to leaking roofs and problems associated with outdated equipment. Voting yes would enable Princeton Public Schools to receive reimbursements for 34 cents and every dollar of principal and interest for the payments to fix our infrastructure from the state of New Jersey. So this is the tentative referendum question that would be up for vote next week. One of the things I'd just like to highlight here is that by law, the, we're required to state the 40%, that we would get back 40% of the annual debt service. However, it has been 85% of that recent, most in the last decade or more, so 34%, but the actual question will state 40%. So it's a little confusing, unfortunately, but Bond Council has confirmed that this is legally the way the question must read. We just had a few questions on the last election. I think there were two or three statewide referendums, but this is obviously a local Princeton referendum. We have to follow the laws. And that's really about it. I want to roll up the questions. I'm gonna stop sharing now so I can see the board's faces.
And Matt, just to repeat, we're gonna, you're, you're, this is, tonight's the night for the board to ask you questions and to think about it and look at, look at the language of the specific question and that's all gonna come in front of us for a vote and next week's meeting on the 16th.
Correct. And, and I went over quickly because there's a lot of, it's, you know, legalese, but do you want me to read the question? It's
No, I don't think you need to read it. We'll have, we'll have access to it. It's, it's attached or are we gonna get a copy of it so people can kind of have a look at it quietly?
Post this on our referendum webpage and we will have the question will be obviously live on the agenda next Friday, this Friday, I'm sorry.
I just think board members will, will just appreciate the opportunity to kind of read it quietly because there's a lot of words there. So if we could have that earlier, you know, to see it again.
Yeah, no, we'll post this first thing in the morning. Elizabeth is, we've been working closely. Debbie, do you have a question?
I do. So we all know there's supply chain issues. Say bids come in for the summer of 2022 and they are outrageous because of, because of the world. Could we push things to 2023? Because I don't want to spending, you know, 40% the first year and then we don't have the rest for everything and, and really because of the environment, you know, because we all know, and I don't know if you know the lead time or where a lot of the materials are even coming from and kind of what would be available. So I'm asking, is, if this passes, is that an option for us to not do anything this summer, summer of 2022? Because our bid, the bids are just ridiculous and we won't be able to finish the project.
It's, it is possible. There are, as we've seen in the construction we've been working on, there are all sorts of variables, all sorts of unknowns, depending on which general contractor wins the lowest public bid. We're at the mercy of, as you mentioned, very presciently, supply chain issues. I know, Tony, this summer there were and still I believe is ongoing some issues with the insulation for the roofs.
Yeah, there's, with insulation, long lead times, but how we've been dealing with this is you get bids ready, you give contractors extra time, you give them extra time to plan the work, you give them extra time to do the work. In the past, you really limit what they could do and when they could do it. Now we're trying to give them a little bit more time to do stuff. And if we find that you can't get work done in the summer of 2022, we'll push it to the summer of 23. I mean, those are things we're, we're gonna deal with in each project and each type and, and we have to see how the market goes and, and see what's best for the district. We're not gonna make, you know, we're not gonna put contractors in bad positions because that won't be good and we definitely don't want to put the board or, or the public in a bad position for anything. So we've, we've got a good handle on it and I'm planning this out over four and five year period is, is what I think is a smart way to go about it.
Yeah, I'm not worried about 2023. I'm worried about 2022. And, you know, and you said like we give them more time, but we need to start school, you know, no later than, you know, the Tuesday after whatever, the Wednesday after Labor Day. So there's a finite time and, you know, my background's in supply chain, so I, I understand it and I don't know if we're already looking at even the materials to know where they are and if they're even manufactured in the states or, you know. And I don't know when we can pull the plug and say, we're just gonna do it in 2023 so that we can open schools, so we can have good roofs, you know.
Well, that's why I think we're planning these, these first three now so that we can get them bid and, and get numbers and make sure we're in good shape and know the contractors have enough time to get the work done in the summer. If we find out when we go to bid that contractors are going, we're not gonna get product in time, we'll pull the bid and we'll delay it until the fall and then bid it again in the fall and then have them do the work in 2023.
Those are I just want that to be out there because it is, you know, a real possibility.
Yeah, clear to the public that, you know, it's your intention to do it, the, those first three schools in 2022, but there may be circumstances that push it to 2023.
Okay, thank you.
Dan?
Couple of questions, Matt. What is the cost to do a special election in January? That's number one. I have two or three questions if I might. Cost of having the election in January?
Last election cost us approximately $23,000.
$23,000. Hypothetically, if we started state-approved projects for referendum over the summer for those schools like Littlebrook that really need it and then did the referendum in November, we would still get the state reimbursement for that as long as it was state-approved referendum projects?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
I think his, his question is, can you do the work before the referendum? And the answer is no.
Was that your question, Dan?
Well, we, we're, we're spending money, for example, on the architects and, and other, you know, before the referendum and when the referendum is approved, we get that money back. So my question is, if we did some referendum projects in July and August of next summer, but held the referendum afterwards, we could still get reimbursed as we're gonna get reimbursed for the architect fees that we've put out there. but held the refer, referendum afterwards, we could still get reimbursed as we going to get reimbursed for the architect fees that we've put out there.
I'm not sure that works. I would have to ask Bond Council.
I would verify with
Work, if you, go ahead, Tony. You have a lot of experience.
Yeah, I don't, you can verify this with Bond Council, but professional services are different than construction. Have to follow their, their
Of course.
Approval first before you can do it.
Yeah, and, and you're right, Tony. Of course, we wouldn't even have the funds to appropriate, so we wouldn't be able to appropriate. We have, we did add back one million dollars as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two into the capital reserve. But there's not a lot left there. We've been using money to fix things.
I know, I know, but our surplus has grown to about twelve, twelve million. And so we could, in fact, put money into capital reserves. You know, from that surplus in the next budget to spend in the summer if we wanted to do the election in November. But you can get back to me on that. Thank you.
Brian?
Did Dan have another question?
No, I don't, I don't think so.
No, I'm good for now. Thanks.
Okay, so I have three questions for Tony and, and two for you, Matt. I think they're for Tony. Tony, the first question is, in some of the pictures, we saw puzzling on the roofs. And will you be designing the roofs to be pitched so that there will not be puzzling in the future?
Yeah, that's a good question. The answer is we're going to do our best to do that for the most part. When we encounter roofs that are less than a quarter inch slope, we increase it to a quarter inch. In older buildings, there's some locations where it's impossible to do that because of existing conditions with masonry and other objects that you can't raise. And in those locations, we do whatever we can to pitch the roofs as, as high as we can. But some instances, it'll not, you know, impossible to do that. All, I'm making clear is, yes, our goal is to always eliminate bonding of any sort. And yes, we try to improve it all the time, but sometimes circumstances get in the way that prevent it.
And a second question for you, Tony. What material do you plan to spec for the, for most of the roofs?
You have a variety of roofs now, but we're planning on using an EPDM roof, a white EPDM. It is, is durable. It has a twenty-year warranty. Some of the other roofs you have are slate, which we're going to do repair on. And asphalt shingles, which we're going to put a, what you would call a residential lifetime shingle, but be warned that a lifetime shingle for a school is really only thirty-five year.
Okay, my, my third final question for you, Tony, is I was a little perplexed by the schedule that seemed to show us doing the thirty-nine rooftop units during the summer of twenty twenty-three, while doing some roofs in twenty twenty-two, some in twenty twenty-three and some in twenty twenty-four. And I guess I, I just would have assumed that we'd want to install new rooftop units or at least the pads that they will sit on contemporaneously with the roofing to ensure that, you know, whatever seams or seals there are, are, don't have to be, that we wouldn't be cutting into new roofs after the fact.
In an ideal world, that would be great. A lot of times with some of your units, you're going to take them off the roof and put them right back on the same curb, so it's not going to be a problem. And I'm going to say that there's not going to be at least one unit that we have to modify a brand new roof. It's quite possible. But lead times on equipment and everything, it'll really delay a lot of what you need to get done in, in the order you really need to do it in if we wait.
But the, if we're cutting in after the fact, will that in any way affect the twenty-year warranty?
No, 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 not at all.
Okay, Matt, my
When you touch it, a, a brand new roof that has a warranty on it, the person who installed the roof is required to come back or the manufacturer's representatives have to come back and, and do the work. It's not like the HVAC contractor would be doing it. It's the, the manufacturers contractors would have to do that work.
Okay, that, that's good to know. Thanks. Matt, I'm sorry to be taking up so much time, but in the page twelve, the budget projections, you mentioned that those were kind of current thinking, but will the operations committee and the full board have a chance to? I, I think you suggested that we would be able to dig in a little more deeply to look at the, both the front-end loading, the amount of front-end loading and the, the smoothing. Will still have a chance to review that after next week?
Yeah, I think, I think we should do that. You and I, I think it was just you and I worked with Brian Morris from Phoenix when we had our Moody's rating review less than a year ago. Brian's been great and getting me some, some numbers to turn around, but we should either have the whole operations committee or maybe just, you know, just a few people take a look at some of the options, but absolutely.
Okay, and then Matt, on a page thirteen, I just wanted to clarify that you showed in the last column that there would be drops in the amount of taxes the average household paid, taxes that are associated with debt service. And I just want to make sure we all understand that that assumes that this would be the only referendum done in the next three or four years. And as you noted, there's an ongoing planning process and so should, should there be one or more referendum during that timeframe, those numbers would likely change. Is that, is that correct?
That is a hundred percent correct, Brian.
Okay, just want to make sure we all understand that. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter?
Thanks, Matt. Just a, a comment to, on something that Dan brought up about the timing. I think if this is that important, we should be moving forward expeditiously if we're talking about the safety of our buildings. Number two, it also, we need to see if the referendum passes before we start building and doing this because if it doesn't, we have to go to Plan B. So doing it in reverse order, even if it were allowed, which I, I agree, I think it is not, that would be problematic. And number three, we're talking about the cost of the election is, by my quick calculation, which may be off by some number is less than one tenth of one percent of the total cost of the referendum. And I, I don't think that that's something that should hold up us from trying to do major construction on buildings that we think needed immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Gene?
Oh, thanks, Matt. Just wanted to clarify that with debt service, the impact to the taxpayers for debt service decreases throughout the course of the project, correct? The impact to the taxpayer decreases each year.
For the first couple of years, and then after two thousand twenty-five, the debt service levels off as it currently stands, as Brian mentioned. You know, the, the assumption is static. We only know what we know now, right? So we don't know what is going to happen possibly two or three years down the road, but
Right.
And that's on the debt service side, only not the general fund, which is the majority of the tax levy.
Okay, thanks. And then if the referendum passes, how soon after are we able to start the work? The bidding, the whole process?
We, we could go to bid as quickly as possible. The bond would be issued usually thirty to forty-five days post referendum.
Thanks.
Could bid before the actual bond goes to market.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you. Matt?
Yeah, I just had a question for Tony, since we have you here. Could you speak a little bit about what it means to have solar-ready roofs? Is that a term of art? You know, does that vary depending on as, as the technology changes, different types of surfaces are required? What, what does that mean?
Generally, we check to make sure that the, the insulation is dense enough for solar to sit on the roof. We make sure that the roofs are strong enough for this and we'll make recommendations for anything future that needs to get done when you do solar. The materials tend to be a little thicker. So it's minor stuff that needs to be done when you do the roof, but it's definitely making sure that it's ready for it as opposed to just putting back a, a simple membrane and, and not thinking about it in the future.
Are we changing load or anything like that?
You will have an increased load on the roof as, as a total, but generally the roofs are strong enough to hold it. The, the weight of the solar panels is not that great. Downrange, it's, it's not, not a big, big load on the roof.
And Matt, I saw on your chart, it looked like we were going to work on that, not twenty-two, but twenty-three. Was that kind of your general thinking?
Get enough roof. In order to do a solar project, the way you're looking at doing it, you have to have a, a large enough array of solar that people will be interested in bidding on it. So you need a large enough area of roof to do the work. So you have to have enough roof ready for it in order for that to occur.
I see. Thank you.
Is it any other questions? Public, yeah, we'll, we'll go right to the public session if there aren't other board questions. There are a few people I saw with their hands raised. Is that?
Yeah, so Matt, thank you for that presentation. I think we all really appreciate the chance to, to talk to you and to Tony about, you know, what your, what, what the proposals are. And I think it's pretty clear now where we're going with it and we look forward to hearing from you before next week if there's any change to the, what's going to be in front of us and, and looking at the question. And I think then, you know, that takes us to the next place in our meeting, which is the public comment. And I'll just note here that written comments can be submitted to the board. The email address is posted there in the agenda. And all board members will see this email and as well as the superintendent, the business administration and the director of communications. We value the opinions and input of all students, staff, parents and community members on any topic. When called upon to speak, please provide your name and home address and keep your comments to three minutes and be respectful of those who wish to comment after you. Please direct your comments to the board, but note that this time is not a discussion or a Q and A. Under New Jersey law, the board shall not discuss personnel matters and shall respond, not respond to comments made by the public. The board president may refer questions or requests for action to staff for response at a later date. Speakers are reminded that comments should be respectful and maintain a level of decorum appropriate for our meeting of a public body. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. There will be a fifteen-minute maximum time period for comments inclusive of all, of all speakers, unless otherwise agreed by the board. Thank you for your consideration of others.
Thank you. So anyone out there, if you want to have, pose a question, just raise your hand like usual. I don't see anybody right now. There was one before, but if there are no public questions, then.
Okay, then we'll just move into our consent agenda.
Carol, there is a question.
Okay.
Hi, Carol Martin, Castle Howard Court. My question is, in terms of public engagement and, and the public being familiar with what this requires and what the referendum is about. Oftentimes, if people are not really fully aware of why things are happening and, you know, all of the things that the board has heard about tonight and the questions that the board had the opportunity to ask. So my question is, what is the plan for engaging the public so that they are fully understanding of the needs and why the referendum is timed the way that it is? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or? Any other hands raised?
Uh, no, there are no other questions.
If there's no other comments, Mr. Bolden, would you like to provide any information in response to the public comment?
Yeah, I was just right. Yes. The, so we've been talking about this for a while. We've, you know, the timing is related to the necessary work that's to be done. Internally, we've been working on this for quite a while. We started publicly talking about this in July, July twenty-seventh, which was a slightly scaled down version of this, of this presentation. You know, it, it's, we will be engaging. We always engage a community. I haven't seen a board that's goal is so transparent. All our committees, except for personnel, for obvious reasons, have open sessions. So I think that's always our goal to be as transparent as absolutely possible. So we do appreciate that question and we'll be having more information coming out about this referendum.
So, Mr. Bolden, you're, there is going to be a website, if I understand correctly, and there'll be a number of materials that'll be disseminated. There's going to be a communications kind of strategy that's going to happen over the next few months so that the public will be informed and have the opportunity to ask questions.
Correct. Yeah, we, 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 we can't tell you how to vote. We can just give information about what we're doing.
Okay.
And planning.
Thank you. If there are no further comments, we'll move forward with our consent agenda. And I will walk through the items and we will vote on them at the end. And if there's questions, please stop me. First is personnel appointments.
Anymore, so I'm going to say goodbye?
Yes, Tony, you are free. Have a nice evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I one is personnel appointments. I two is transfer reassignments. I three, personnel items. I four, student services. I five, curriculum and instruction. I six, substitute teachers. I seven, leaves of absence. And then we have J one, educational placements. J two, IDEA carryover. And that brings us to K one, the consent vote. Could I have a motion, please? Betsy, second. Peter? Any discussion? If not, could we call a roll, please?
Aaron?
Yes.
W Bronfield?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Betsy Bagle?
Yes.
Ryan McDonald?
Yes.
Peter Katz?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yeah.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Consent, consent agenda passed.
And then that brings us to the second public comment topic. Any topic? If there's anyone out there, I don't, I, I read the intro, same intro.
I do not see anyone with their hand raised.
Okay, that brings us to the closing discussion. And I think I emailed the board. There was one item that I hoped we could discuss tonight, and that was the question of whether we would consider possibly having our public comment, people who wish to make public comment register in advance, either in advance of the meeting or during the meeting, even if it's through a chat to Mr. Bolden or his designee, just to give their name and their address. As the board knows, we had some individuals join at the last meeting that were giving fake names and we weren't sure exactly who we were going to be letting into the meeting. And it would give one more layer of protection and, and assurance that we have actual constituents who wish to make productive comments as opposed to people kind of bombing our meeting. So that was a suggestion that I made through email to the board. And I don't know if people would like to, to talk about that. Brian?
Yeah, so just in terms of process, so first of all, I think it's a good idea to be able to have some verification as long as it does not in any way inhibit members of the Princeton public from engaging in any way that they, they want pursuant to our guidelines. I guess my question is if somebody, if, if the process is to send a chat note to Mr. Bolden with the name and address, it's just Matt is running the meeting. I, I'm, my question is, does he have the bandwidth to do that in addition to, I'm running the meeting and the, the Zoom? And, and if not, might somebody else be able to somehow serve that role?
Thank you. Peter?
Yeah, kind of along the same lines as Brian. I, I like the idea. I'm not sure exactly the logistics of how that would work. And I also want to make sure, excuse me, that we're not limiting anybody in a meeting because somebody may not know that until somebody makes a comment that they want to say anything. So, you know, and that could cause the same problem, right? We're still going to get people at the last minute saying they want to speak and I don't think we should or can prevent them from doing so. So I, I, I think I'm all for trying to minimize kind of the Zoom bombing. I don't know that we're ever going to get to a hundred percent, you know, risk-free. But I think we have to do some thinking on the logistics of how we go about structuring that process.
Daphna?
Um, so I, you know, of course we want to make sure no one's Zoom bombing and we did, you know, we
You know, we were able, the board members were able to cat catch some of the um people who were impersonating. We don't really know if they were going to speak. They didn't have the chance to speak. Um, so I just think um, you know, uh, at any time we limit the 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 chance for or put restrictions on the chance for the public to speak, I think is a loss, you know, for democracy. Um, and I think to Brian's point where um, you know, um, we could assign someone, you know, to be monitoring. Um, and if uh I forget, I think it was Adolf Eichmann was one of the people last time. You know, obviously, that's not a real name, and that person um could be removed. Um, so you know, it's do we want to do it on the front end, or do we want to do it on the back end? And I just think we should at least try to do it on the front end. Secondly, you know, at what point, you know, and this is another discussion, but at what point are we going to resume our meetings in person? Um, you know, and there are pros and cons to that, right? So we have mu- many more of our community engaged in our meetings, which is a great thing. Um, on the other hand, you know, our staff is in schools, our our, you know, our kids are in schools. Um, so um as leaders of the district, you know, what what message are we sending by not not being in person? So I just think um there are a lot of ways I think that we can look to address um the the concerns that you rightfully raised.
Thank you. Yeah, and I did speak to, I can I connected with West Windsor Plainsboro and Lawrence, both those boards, and they basically overcame the they had issues too or were concerned, but then they went, they were, they're all going back. They're in person. So they don't have the same. The issue for us is that we're continuing to be on Zoom, and there are people, I think, around the country who are making efforts to try to disrupt Boards of Education, because that's just what they're doing right now. So just trying to make sure that we don't, you know, put ourselves or our staff in a position of having to figure things out on the fly like we did in the last meeting, which was a little bit little bit uncomfortable for everyone, I think. So um, we can certainly talk more about that. Um, Debbie?
Yeah, no, agreeing with everybody, and I like that we are going to keep the chat closed also. I I think that was quite distracting and gives people you know, freedom behind um, you know, behind a a blank wall and not, you know, not really telling us who they are. Um, if we were to go back in person, could we somehow have it so people can still watch us from home? Um, you know, because we do get so many more people that, you know, people won't be able to show up as much. And plus, then we we have to be in a bigger room or, you know.
I guess, Matt, Matt, the question for you is, you know, have you heard from your colleagues? Is there maybe you can look into that or or make a recommendation or some options for us, or tell us what you think you'd like us to to do on that? How?
We have a we have a fairly small board room, so we would likely go into the pack uh. And there are options, you know, of course, for live streaming. Um, we'd have to look on the technology side about being on Zoom, and then, you know, I don't know if we all want to have headsets on, because that defeats the purpose of being in person anyway. After.
And weren't we given a recommendation by the Board of Health that we were I think council has remained uh virtual, and so we were following suit.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's overall been um a more democratic process uh as you as most of the board members have agreed. We've gotten a lot more people involved. Um, and we, you know, I can monitor. My bandwidth is usually pretty high um most days, nine out of ten. And so, you know, we can monitor emails. We were required during these um, you know, COVID uh to r- r- read out emails if people would send them. Um, you know, we can enlist uh Kurt. Beth, did you? I'm sorry, Betsy, did you have something?
I I just wanted to say, I do think it's a really great discussion to be having, and I would note a major difference being on Zoom. And if we were to move to a hybrid model, I'd hope the same would be true. People used to be able to watch us in real time before. There was some kind of Facebook Live feed or something, but no one was able to comment from home. So if you had, if you need a babysitter, or if you just can't be out late, you have to be at work in the morning. That goes for our staff, our families. They're able to, you know, a- access these meetings and participate. Now, we also see what comes with that is people who don't live here actually participate as well. But I hope we keep that in mind, that for many members of our community, being able to speak at these meetings has actually provided a i- it's been a better format for that. So I look forward to having these discussions.
Betsy, Peter?
Uh, yeah, I was just going to add, um, in Cranberry, we've gone back in person, but we've also had discussions of this exact type of, you know, um, how can we incorporate uh virtual appearance by the public? Um, because we've received a a lot of public uh members wanting to have the access that they have now with the understanding that in person it is different. I mean, look, it we do have a broader range. It comes with some issues we discussed, but it's also different of us looking at each other, you know, in the Brady Bunch uh for the last two years as opposed to in person, face to face. And I think that that you know, there's there is an important dynamic there as well. Um, and that I think it is helpful to hear from the public in person and see them um visually, not just in in two dimensions, but um, yeah, I think there are issues that can be kind of a hybrid or kind of combine them, uh, and that's something that you can we can work out here, just as we're doing in Cranberry.
Well, I think it's helpful to have this discussion together um in public, we where we can do it, and uh I guess you know, Matt, if you have any, you know, recommend Matt or Carol, if you have any recommendations to us, or you want us to think about changing anything, please let us know. I think we're all willing to to discuss that and think about how we can continue to be most democratic and also um preserve our ability to get the business of the district done in a way that's that's works for everyone, so. Um, Kurt, did you want to say anything? You just appeared.
Yeah, I am. Yes, thank you. Just to let you know, um, not that it's a problem, but when we set up in the conference room, we need to have all afternoon to set up all the microphones and video equipment to double check things. And then it needs to, you know, we need to wrap things up afterwards. Uh, that's the one thing we're taking away from meeting times in that conference room for just the amount of setup. I don't mind doing it, but I'm just saying for people that need to use that conference room. I come in at one o'clock. I have to kick meetings out that I can get things set up in time for the meeting that night. So, you know, that's neither here nor there, but if we want to go back to a live meeting e- eventually, um, I think we need to think about something on a different venue that we can have more people uh that we could do, like the pack. We could probably run something down there and have something kind of permanently in place that we could go in there and just set it up. Particularly with going up with two meetings a month. We need to have something that's an easier setup. Yeah, that's just my two cents on it. It's just that I don't want to, I don't want to be going in and blocking up a whole afternoon. And then if it runs real late, I got to block out the next morning. You know, I I want to keep that room open over there. And I know Bob just commented, there's not a lot of meetings going on over there, but we might be getting back into all that. So I'm just throwing that out there that there, you know, as I said, more people get involved on the Zoom that I've noticed.
Well, and if it's permissible legally going forward, we may, if we're still having two meetings at once, we may want to think about doing some by Zoom and some in person if that's, you know, to help with resources and and um accessibility, just to throw that out there. Brian, did you have something you want to say? No. Okay, um, to be continued, I think, right? Um, thank you, everyone. Uh, thank you, Matt, for your presentation tonight and for all the work that went into that. We know you've been really working hard to put this together very quickly. And you're under a pretty tight timeframe, um, given all the preparations that have to happen for these projects, if they're going to really happen for next summer. So thank you for that. Um, and thank you. I thank you, everyone else, for your participation tonight. Um, if there's no further comments, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn? Um, uh, Jean, a second? Uh, Peter, thank you. All in favor of adjournment? Motion carried. Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
Matt, everybody?
Thank you.
All right.